Ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let Stanford pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mary Ann, would you take the roll, please?
Here.
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 Yes, here.
Here. Before I start, our president had to be out of town on work, and he would call in if we needed for a quorum, but he didn't, so according to the board policy, I will, as vice president, preside over the meeting today. Our first order of business is recognitions, and I understand Kristen's going to help out on this. Okay. I'll read them if you want. Whatever you want to do.
No, she's been practicing. She had the phonetics spelling ready. She's all good. John's got certificates.
Getting ready for my reading.
I will stand over here.
I don't know, Mr. Prokes put a giant cable cord in front of that. Mr. Prokes, what's up with that?
Five students were selected to exhibit their work in the Illinois High School Art Exhibition. This show is the state's premiere show featuring students' visual artworks from the top city, suburban, public, and private high schools at Zo Bee Art Center in Bridgeport. At the Best of the Best competition, for which each school submitted 25 artworks for a total of over 2,500 artworks for consideration, they are then jury down to the best five pieces from each school for the final 500 exhibited works. Congratulations to Natalia Valenzuela, awarded a scholarship to attend a summer workshop at Kendall College of Art and Design for her photography. Isabel Montefanese. Fiona Satterfield. William Herena, awarded honorable mention in the drawing category and a scholarship to attend a summer course at the School of the Art Institute. Michaela Aspezido. Congratulations to the following students who participated in the UIC German Day competition. They won the following categories. Congratulations to Poetry, second place, Victoria Hansen. Spelling bee, third place, Evan Dunbar. Cover art for UIC German Day program, third place, Allison Bean. We would like to recognize the following 2017-18 winter athletes. Girls' basketball, all-conference athlete, all-academic athletes, Brenna Loftus. And Alan Meehan. All-academic athletes, Elizabeth Murphy. Alissa Alvarado. Georgiana Gomorsec. Sylvia Harvin. Rosarol Cobas. Mary Maloney. And Leah Retschman. Wrestling, IHSA sectional qualifier, all-academic athlete, Riley Shaw. All-academic athlete, all-conference athlete, DeMar Pierce. All-conference athlete, MVP, Samuel Fletcher. All-academic athletes, Will Brylop. And Garrett Wymer. All-conference athletes, Cory Dishman. Dominic Rowe.
This is Cory.
This is Cory. Come on up, Cory. Is that Dominic?
No.
And Vincent Galvin.
Congratulations. Perfect timing.
Good timing, Vincent.
Competitive dance and palms, all-academic athletes, all-conference athletes, Kelly Halvey. Corinne Hopack. Liliana Ziagua. All-academic athletes, Sophia Bowie. Lizette Escobedo. Olivia Meyer. Angela Murray. Destiny Pereira. McKenna Doyle. Catherine Glave. Quincy Hayes. And Cassandra Ramirez. Boys' basketball, all-academic athlete, all-conference athlete, MSC MVP, Zachary Vaya. Zachary also qualified for the three-point contest and will be going down to state this week. All-academic athlete, all-conference athlete, Ryan Sessinas. All-academic athletes, Alexander Mindel. Jake Vaya. Ryan Sirmek. Samuel Gravetti. Patrick Tanley. All-conference athletes, Jason Bijannis. Andrew Dion. Competitive cheerleading, all-academic athletes, all-conference athletes, Heidi Wolfer. Aminie Coleman.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Good job.
And Eva Kaiser. All-academic athletes, Sophia Deforti. Diana Finnegan. Mia Hiligoss. Laura Benanas. Zeta Dangerfield. And Renee Marconi. Girls' gymnastics, all-academic athletes, all-conference athletes, Kathryn Polanski. Amber O'Brien. Savannah Bishop. All-academic athletes, Sydney Lindenberg. Mia Gerini. Nina Thomas. Zoe Viszarkowicz. Boys' swimming and diving, IHSA state qualifier, all-academic athlete, all-conference athlete, Michael Rosa.
This will be all-state athlete, too?
You gotta finish.
Yes. That came in after the fact. IHSA state qualifiers, Jemani Wise. There you go, babe.
Great to go.
Jemani's one of our divers.
Jemani, you got a scholarship, correct? And where? You're gonna go dive where?
St. Bonaventure University.
Congratulations.
Another one of our divers, Matthew Vila Braddick. All-academic athletes, all-conference athletes, Roland Dowling. And Noah Bright. All-academic athletes, Peter Bartman.
Congratulations, Peter.
Christopher Murphy. Matthew Harder. Justin Herman. And Charles Wobbling. All-conference athlete, Matthew Towne. Special Olympics basketball, before I announce who's on the list, they'll be going to state and they'll be leaving Friday morning, and their first competition is Friday afternoon. So we're very excited for them. And we'll have a state send out for them Friday morning before school. Captains Joshua Sylvie. And Aaron Torres.
Good job, Aaron. Captain, that's a good job.
Yep.
Stay up here, and we'll take a picture with the whole team. Let's get up here.
Aaron was also named as one of the team's standouts. Other team standouts were Nicholas Loges.
Good job, Nick. Stay up there, Nick. Stay up there, Nick. And you can dab one more time.
Right here, babe. No, stay here.
Over here.
Please.
And Marissa Bloodgood. Rookie rock stars, Joseph McKelvin. And Julia Villario. Volunteers are McKenna Doyle. Annalisa Sinkey. Jacob Garvey.
Good job, Jacob.
Never knew you spelled your name that way.
After how many years of living in this store? Good job, Jake. Stay up here.
John Kozner. And Jacob Tuchkaski. So good luck at state this week, this weekend, and we wish you guys the best of luck.
Harder, take your pic. Stay here. Your mother's gonna take your picture. You. Take care.
Good luck, guys. Congratulations. Student Association is not here, but there is a day of service. We'll ask everybody.
The next item, well, just, there's two more items that might interest the parents and students that came before we move on to some of the other business. The Student Association report is normally next, but I understand they couldn't be here today.
Kristen, no Student Association, correct?
No Student Association.
And then there's a day of service.
There's a... Yeah. Day of Service report.
Day of Service report for us.
So our PTO facilitates every year an annual day of service, and we have a student committee that is responsible for planning a large portion of it, and they are here to report out.
Well, step up who's ever involved. Whoever wants to report. And tell us your name and what grade you're in.
I'm Katie Pearl Peard-Mock, and I am a sophomore.
I'm Taylor Juergens, and I'm a sophomore, too.
My name is Haley Hutchins, and I'm a senior.
Okay. Great. Who wants to go first?
So this year, there's 22 total sites across Riverside, North Riverside, and Brookfield, and our theme is make a splash, and that's because we are going to be cleaning up the river as one of our main priorities.
Yeah, and so I was in charge of making like the registration for student signups, and it went all live today, but we're starting like register, like the signups during lunches on Monday. And then also, we just finished, like ended like the deadline for our t-shirt contest, and we had like a lot of applications, which is good, and we're planning on like voting and assiding on what like the t-shirt will be for everyone soon, and the student who wins gets a Chick-fil-A gift card as a prize, which is cool.
And one thing about the day of service that we're really trying to push this year is the amount of students involved. Our goal, I believe, this year is to get 350 students signed up for the day, and some of the measures we're taking to get more students involved and aware of the day of service would be we created a promotional video that we're hoping to air in the TVs before and after school or during lunch hours. In addition to that, we are considering sending this video to science teachers and having them show to their students.
Want to show the video?
Yes.
...in the fall, so I would just like to thank Lisa while she's here for her hard work in that as well.
Well, just so people know, we kind of are moving into the business part of our meeting. You're all welcome to stay. We encourage it, but if you want to leave.
Now's the time.
Okay, so I'm gonna... The president's... I have one person.
Bye, Joe. You know it. Bye, Jean. Take care. I might...
The next item of business on the agenda is the president's report. Since he's not here, we're not going to have a president's report today, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
I'd like to start the superintendent's report. I'd like to introduce Ellie Ambul from LANSI and Ellen Dutek, as they say that, Deutsch, okay, from LANSIA. So Ellie has just got her contract approved from the directing board of LANSI, which I sit on as the superintendent of RB. Ellie is going to be the new director starting July 1st, 2018. And we also just approved a one-year extension with the LANSIA, which is the teachers' association that represents all the staff at LANSI, the special education cooperative that we are a part of. And so they've been doing a little tour to all the boards. I'll let Ellie introduce herself.
Yeah, thank you for just a few seconds here tonight to say thank you. LANSIA, at the beginning of the year, decided a really nice gesture to thank all of our school boards for the support they offered to LANSI as one of 15 member districts of our organization supports students with special needs. Some of them are here tonight that we actually recognize and know. LANSIA coordinated getting coffee mugs, the wrapping actually done, and presentation them by transition students, so some RB students in the 18 to 22 program. And we, again, just wanted to come and give a token of our thanks for the support that our school boards offer to us. I'm really excited to be here, and we have a great partnership with LANSIA and a great partnership with our school districts. And so I appreciate Kevin's support, and we're closely with Sheila Jursic, too. He was a good trip.
And Ellie, a little bit about yourself. Prior to, you were at LANSI for a little bit, then you went to Niles?
So I've been, so not exactly. I've been a special educator for 15 years. Started in Skokie, then I moved to Darien, District 61, which is where I became really familiar with LANSI and the great work that they do. Then I left Darien to work at Nutria High School for the past five years. So I was their director of special education for five years. And then saw the opportunity here at LANSI. It was kind of a unique opportunity to transition into the role of executive director starting this July. So have been here since past July and looking forward to taking over the leadership this coming summer.
And I knew there was a connection to LANSI. It says it's from the Darien.
No, you're close.
Okay. And I knew it was an N where Nutria, not Niles, so I was close.
Right, right. Nutria, though.
Well, thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Appreciate you squeezing some.
No problem. In regards to the superintendent's report, I have no updates tonight. None of the councils have met. We're in our staffing phase. We did the preliminary budget last month. So it's, knock on wood, a slow month in regards to advisory council, so there's no formal update tonight.
Principals' report.
This past Saturday, the RBEF hosted their annual telethon and raised over $20,000. And this money will be put towards staff and student grants for various activities, such as leadership camps, music camps, and other academic opportunities for students. Most of those occur through the summer, but they don't have to. And so for students or staff that are interested in information about applying for a grant, they should visit rbef.tv, and that grant application should be up soon. Yesterday, Mr. Mannan and myself took 10 students to a school safety forum at Willbrook High School. Students had the opportunity to brainstorm as a group ways they can improve the safety at RB. They also listened to other students' concerns about safety issues in their schools and what they plan to do about it. There were 28 schools there and over 400 students there. So it was a great experience for our students. Additionally, there was a panel with first responders, state representatives, and state senators that answered questions about school safety and policy issues that students had submitted. Upon returning to RB, we had lunch with the students, and we brainstormed things that students wanted to see us try to accomplish by the end of this year to improve safety. Most of the list was geared towards next year, since we only have two months left, and then looking out anything else long-term that they wanted us to consider. So it was a great conversation, and it was a very productive day. I think the students really enjoyed the opportunity to voice their concern, but then also hear about other concerns that students might have and what students can do about it. As you know, tomorrow's the National School Walkout. As stated in the letter that was emailed home to families, we will have a normal bell schedule tomorrow. Students who choose to participate in the national movement must adhere to the guidelines that were provided in the letter that was emailed home, which are put in place to ensure student safety. We expect that all students return to their classroom no later than 10:22, so that gives students a five-minute passing period to get back into the building after the 17 minutes of honoring the victims at Stoneman Douglas High School. Tuesday, April 10th, is our all-school testing day. Students will report to school at the normal time, and testing locations will be shared with students once the date gets closer. But freshmen will be taking MAP testing that day, sophomores will take a PSAT 10, and juniors will be taking the state mandated SAT test. Seniors will have a non-attendance day as a college visit day if they choose to take advantage of that. Parents don't have to register their students for any of these tests, and students that don't have accommodations will finish around 1:00 p.m. The next thing I'd like to provide you with in the principal's report is a list of summer school academic courses, workshops, and academic camps that we'll be offering this summer. This information, along with our athletic camps, will be on our website no later than April 1st. And so on page eight and nine in the board book, you will see academic courses that are for credit. Most of them are credit recovery, with the exception of two courses, US Government, so that's a course that rising seniors can take for credit advancement, and Health for students that are rising juniors. So these are students that planned ahead and didn't take Health as a sophomore to fit something else in their schedule. They can take it going into their junior year over the summer. In addition, we have some academic workshops. These are non-credit opportunities that are designed for students that are taking a particular course in the fall, or as noted, our bridge to freshman, our freshman bridge course, and then as well as academic camps, which are non-credit opportunities for students. All of those things run cost-neutral to the district.
Is it the same? Is it otherwise the same as last year?
It's the exact same, except for we took off some academic camps that hadn't run in the past three or four years, where we had absolutely no interest from students. We took those off of our pamphlet. Other than that, it's the exact same.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
We were gonna have Mr. Dome do his athletic summary under the principal's report, if you're okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Scott's reports tend to go a little longer.
Most appreciated. Good evening. I think the, you guys have the documents. Quickly recapping some of the highlights and the summaries from the winter. You heard some of the accomplishments. I'll repeat some of them because they are so good. But the summary this year, if you overall look at our winter sports and the accomplishments of them, was an excellent, excellent winter. Our boys' basketball team was in first place in conference, and all other sports that competed in the conference tournament or a conference schedule were in second place. So it was a very, obviously, a very competitive year. We had our girls' basketball team, again, was second, like all the other ones that did not come in first, and lower levels did very well. As you heard, the swimming team qualified three students for the state meet, and all of them performed way above expectations. And we're considering the top 12 in the state, which is considered all-state when you break down the state meet. So that's, you know, as many as all schools that go to. That's fantastic. The girls' gymnastics team does not have a conference this year. It's, the independent conference was kind of disbanded. So they are competing, again, against individual schools all over. And next year, we're going to be in a conference rotation with some of the schools that we currently, where we're in the independent conference, were, and then some of the Upstate A teams. So they'll be having a more competitive advantage going against teams that are similar to us in size and strength. Our competitive dance and POMS teams this year qualified for the state, along with, you know, come in second place in the Metro Suburban League Conference. They came in 24th when they went downstate as a team. So that's the first time in a while that they've gone downstate, and Coach Doyle was excited about that. And the numbers, again, were good for her, and she's expecting another good summer and moving on. Mike Ryan Gruber, in his first year as boys' basketball, carried on the tradition, so to speak, as they won the conference, and the sophomores also won their conference. So, and the freshmen were second. So the boys' basketball, very high finishing. When you look at the numbers of our participation in the one document where we list all the winter athletes, basically, our numbers in boys' basketball, POMS, cheers, wrestling, girls' gymnastics, they probably stayed pretty similar to last year, pretty level. Nothing changed too much. Those are, again, pretty good numbers. The girls' basketball did have a decrease of five girls, but they didn't cut anybody this year. They just had a lot less seniors, only two seniors, so that kind of dipped the numbers a little bit with the youth program. In the future, it looks as if we'll have those numbers coming back because they're obviously in the system in seventh and eighth grade. Boys' swimming and diving had their numbers increased back to where they thought it would be. They had a little dip a year ago, and they're back up to 36, which is a very good number, kind of where it was two years ago. And so, again, that, some of the ebb and flows depending on the year. But they anticipate they'll be right in the middle of the 30s again. Looking at the winter numbers, so to speak, that, just a reminder that that form is kind of a work in progress. It's not a perfect accounting form by any means. But the number of students, as you see there listed, again, stayed pretty much close to our five-year average. Had a little bump compared to last year, and I just explained those different sports. The POMS went down a couple, but they didn't have their volunteer this year. They had, the volunteer was not here this year. So we're hoping to get a volunteer again and maybe keep a few extras for additional lower-level participation. But again, the other sports were, with swimming going up, were pretty close. And that relates, again, into the fees collected. Again, that's another work in progress. So the total, for instance, in the 1718 year, that $33,272, that's currently, if you took today's number off the book, would be about $34,400. And that's due to payment plans that people are still paying. Their plans often coming in with things like that. So that number, again, depending on the number of kids that either quit, got hurt somewhere during the year, you know, your starting numbers aren't always exactly the same as your ending numbers for winter sports or any sports season. So that, again, is how that thing can fluctuate a little bit. And then injuries or something like that, there's some times where the business office will have to make a calculation and a refund for time in or out of the sport, so. And then the waived students on the bottom, again, was kind of an ebb and flow. It was up and down, but it's pretty much expected amount. Any questions or things?
I think there was one question submitted on that. Did you answer that?
Yes.
I just always wonder, why is, like, wrestlers have, like, 40 meets, and the swimmers have seven? Why is the boys' swimming schedule always so light?
The, each sport has limitations from the state. Swimming, in some sports, swimming is one of them, where the coaches choose not to do their maximum amount of dates and more about their training to get to, maybe, like I said, an invite, or when they call it, and there's words tapering, all kinds of things you can, but they kind of pick out where they want to have it and spread it out in their timeframe. Wrestling usually wants to get as many in as they can. They technically have, you know, it's not 40 some, but it's, you know, there's a number.
They're 19 and 11.
Yeah, so that's 30.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but basketball can have 35 contests. So every sport in the IJSA has a maximum. Most of our sports here, on the varsity level, we're at the maximum. There's a few, you know, that don't, and swimming is one of them, but they kind of choose to do that. Sometimes gymnastics also, depending on how you're training, you might not want to go on a Thursday and a Saturday, you know, because of the body, you know, what it takes, the wear and tear on the body.
And also, probably, the five and two record is probably only the dual and triangular meets.
Right, yeah, the tournament record.
It's not the invites.
The invites count, though.
Oh, yeah, their invites, you know, again, they're in a certain place, every invite, but that's where they get the bulk of their, I would say, their competition, you know, races and things come in those areas.
Any other questions this way? Any questions, John or Gina? Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So now let's work our way back to Chief Financial Officer's report.
Just want to make sure I'm on the right page here. Good evening, Board. Tonight, I would like to highlight the February 2018 financials. This represents eight months or 67% of our fiscal year. The first report that you will find in board book on page 13 is the monthly financial report outlining our revenue and expenditures for the month. Total monthly revenue for all funds was roughly $3.5 million. The three main revenue sources that we had for this month were real estate taxes, general state aid, and special education transportation reimbursement. The expenditures for the total month were roughly $2 million. The top three expenditures for the month were salary and benefits, purchase service contracts, and out-of-district tuition. If we look at our operating fund balance, our operating fund balance at the end of February is approximately $14.2 million. Moving on from the monthly financials to the financial statements, on page 14 is the fund balances of all funds, showing beginning balance plus revenue minus expenditures, giving our ending balance as of February 2018. If we proceed on to the following page, looking at strictly revenue, I'd like the Board to focus on funds 10, 20, 40, and 50 as to where these are tracking per what it's budgeted versus the actual. They are tracking very nicely on it. The other funds, you will see the percentages are quite different. That has to do with the life safety bonds that were issued and the working cash bond that was issued. As we move to the expenditures and focus on those same funds, the 10, 20, 40, and 50, you will see that we are tracking very nicely compared to what 67% of our budget would be. Once again, just a reminder, in our O and M, we did pay Airmark the full amount of the service contract, so that is the increase therefore of the 84%. The next report in your packet is the revenue and expense report. There were two questions submitted. The first question is on board book page 17, under prior year revenue. The district is approximately $650,000 higher in the prior year revenue line item. As a reminder, we received $400,000 in tax distribution after June 30th. The additional $200,000 is about the 1% difference that we didn't budget as we budgeted the 98.5% tax collection. The second question that was on the revenue expense report is on page 18 in board book, which is under the tech-enhancing education line item. This is the career and technical education grant. We had expenditures from FY '17 totaling $14,000. That was actually reimbursed in August due to the state making late payments. If we move on from the revenue expense report and move into the student activity accounts.
Scott, with that, CTNE, as I'm thinking out loud here, so that contributes then to our deficit? Because when we finished the fiscal year at June 30th, that was $14,000 that was on account.
It would have been part of the previous year's deficit. Because that one, on a cash basis, it hit in this current fiscal year.
Okay, so when you budgeted that revenue for this year, you only probably budgeted the 14 or 17 that you're assuming we're going to get this year. So is that account going to come in then?
It depends on when the state releases it and when we put in for reimbursement with the Des Plaines Valley region. So I budgeted in there what I, what I was told what our allotment was for this current year, for 1718. So that's why it's over the bud, over budget on that. Going back to...
So besides the real estate taxes, you're going to look at whether we change the way we budget them for next year. Why don't you add another item of, you know, other revenue sources where we might get the money because the state's paying late? Because it happens, it seems like it happens, it happens every year.
Every grant. Sometimes it happens with the transportation reimbursement.
So, I mean, it should, I think we should look at, besides the real estate taxes, any government payments that, where we didn't receive it and where we think there's some likelihood we're going to still receive it in the next fiscal year. And then at least decide whether we want to budget for it or not. Would you agree, Kevin?
Let's take a look at that. We could talk more.
Okay. Okay, if we proceed on to the student activity accounts, there was a question on board book page 46 in regards to the field trip line item. This account is used to pay for student activity field trips during the calendar year. In this case, the district wrote a check to secure a trip, which overdrawn the account. This was actually for the ski club that went to Willmont Mountain. We had to pay it upfront in order to secure it. Student fees collected for the trip will replenish the overdrawn account. There was a deposit made in March, and the current account balance for the field trip account is actually positive $923. If we move back to my CFO memo, medical insurance update. EBC, based on the primary projections below and the research that I've completed, is my recommendation for the district to remain with EBC at this time. The EBC cooperative provides more stability versus a self-funded.
Scott, what board book page, though, is here?
Uh, that's back to page 11. 11. Once again, EBC provides the stability versus a self-funded plan and provides less risk for rate increases as it includes 109 districts. Overall, EBC provides a district fiscal stability, and we have experienced no concerns in regard to the service we receive. The final rates will be coming out next week, March 21st. So as soon as I get those rates, I will work through Dr. Skinkis and tell him what the actual rates will be for our medical and dental plans. Our technology infrastructure update. Our current internet configuration that we have is AT&amp;T is our primary with 500 megabytes going over fiber, and our backup internet is 150 megabytes over cable. In order to continue to maintain the one-to-one initiative and to keep up with the technology in this building, the future internet configuration will be AT&amp;T still our primary with a 1 gig over fiber, and our Comcast backup will be 500 megs, megabytes over fiber. With these upgrades, the district can now support the phone system over fiber instead of copper lines. Later in your board packet, you will see the telephone proposal to switch our current phone service over to fiber. The last thing I highlighted in the CFO memo is the tax collection update. I did receive notification from the township treasurer that they put taxes that were supposed to be for 2017 in air into 2016. They made an adjustment. It did not hit in last month. It hit in this current month. So if you went back and looked at the revenue expense report for prior year taxes, you would see a deduction of roughly $900,000, but that actually was supposed to be for tax year 2017. As far as notification, I get notification from the Cook County Treasurer as to when tax distributions are being released. I also get notification from the township treasurer on those tax distributions, and it outlines exactly what tax year that the actual taxes are supposed to be for.
Are there any other questions for that part of your report?
No other questions. Oh, there was, yes.
Okay, what page?
Whatever the example is in board book, page...
Before you're going there, if we go to page 17, and you explain the $642,000 that were above the budget for the prior tax levy, what you just were explaining, a $900,000 credit is shown in that line now, right?
It is.
Okay.
At the previous month's board meeting, it was...
A million and a plus.
Yes, 21% over. And now it dropped down to the 8% over.
Board book page 50 is the example of how you, how the notification received from the treasurer's office.
And on that example, it's broken down into townships on there. Just so everyone is aware of this, 21 is Lyons Township, 31 is Provinceo, and 34 is Riverside.
So how do they break it down? So if we look at the other, the tax year, so we have two credits. We did some refunds for 23, 2013, and 2016. But how would you know for 2017 whether it's the first installment or second?
Anything from 2017 is considered prior year. Because the 2017 levy year, you get the first collection starting in January. So it goes from January up until June 30th, and it would be identified as taxes for 2017.
Yeah, but all kinds of people paid their tax levy early this year because of the change in the federal tax code. So they paid in 2017 in December the first levy for 2018, which is a 2017 tax year, right?
That is, that is correct.
So how did they show you on here?
This, this on here, the only thing that I have to work with is tax year 2017, which is my current year.
But there's two levies for each tax year, right?
There is. That is correct. There could be multiple, actually.
So there's not more than one levy. There's two levies in each year, right?
You have current year and prior year.
Let's not talk about the way you're accounting for it. Let's talk about what the county does. We all get our tax bills if we have a property, right?
Yes.
They send everybody two tax bills every year. And each year, you pay the prior year tax bill and the following year. So your 2016 taxes, you paid in two installments in 2017, right?
That is correct.
So I'm still, after all seven years on the board and asking all these questions, I don't understand how you break this down. So when we're, is this a 2017, if it's a 2017 tax year, those are paid in 2018, right?
Yes.
So what you're saying is...
Dollars received are 17.
The dollars received are for 2017 tax year, but we received, based on this report, in February of 2018, all these payments, right?
That is correct.
Okay. But when we got the report for December of, you get it every month, I think you said. So you got the report in December of 2017. Did it show 2017 payments then?
It was, it was zero.
Which is not possible.
So it was shown in under 16, then?
It was all tax year 16.
So then we have no way of actually properly allocating the receipts with how we budget for the two assessments each year?
All we can do is go off of...
Because they certainly, you can't even pay your tax bill to the county without giving them the original. They won't even take the money. So they certainly must have a way of tracking that payment with that tax bill, right?
The money we're receiving in this, this school year is the 2017 levy, correct?
That is correct. That's why it's current year.
So that's why it all says 2017?
That is not correct. In this school year, we received the second payment from the 2016 tax year in 2017, which was the first payment for, in the fall, for this school year, right?
Yes.
That is correct.
So every, that's why, so when I keep pushing it, every year...
$18, is that what your question? I mean, Scott's not the treasurer.
No, I know he isn't, but I want, we cannot properly budget. We've been struggling with this forever until we can find out how this is done. And the proper thing is, the twenty sixteen tax year, we received one payment in early in twenty seventeen, which is the prior school year, and we received one payment in later in the year, in August or so, which is the second assessment from twenty sixteen, which is in the current school year, and that happens every year. Every year, we are getting one payment from the prior year and one payment from two prior years. And if they're not breaking it down that way, that is a reas- one reason we could never tie those to the budget number with the receipt number, right? But they certainly have the information. You can't pay your bill without it.
All right, well, why don't we get another breakdown from this to get a better understanding? Right? Because we pa- approved the levy in December, and we received that first payment in this spring, correct?
Yes.
And so with some of this money from that levy that we approved in December? So last year's December. The sixteen levy? That one that we approved in December of sixteen, or the one that we approved just last two months, three months ago? This money that we got right here on this report?
No, this is, this would be from current year. So it's, this would be...
Don't say current year because we don't...
From seventeen's levy. This would be roughly fifty, fifty-five percent of that. When it's all said and done.
When you say seventeen's levy, the December seventeenth, the one we just approved three months ago?
The one that was just approved.
So these are people that are started to, these are starting to, we're starting to get money for the March payment now in February?
That is correct.
So this could be some of that money that Tim's saying people paid before December or January first?
Now, the county could have the money, I suppose. Maybe they did that.
So the one where they put it in tax year sixteen in January, that was actually for tax year seventeen. So then you get, we had some payment of, in January, some payment in February, and there was more that came in in March.
Okay. I, I, I wish...
It's still not easy to break it out.
This is what the treas- the Cook County Treasurer gives, and this is what our Proviso Township Treasurer is working off of.
Okay. Well, let's continue to look at it, you and I, and see if we could figure out a way to make this a little easier for our budgeting purposes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, of course.
Whenever I have something complicated and hard to figure out, I like to make a little chart. And it's very difficult to do that in Word. I'm not saying this is easy, but maybe get a chart and just so we can have this, and ju- just make it so we now don't have to keep figuring it out each time. You can look at that and say, okay, there's multiple steps here, and if we can simplify it on some type of flow chart, I think it might be helpful. I don't know.
Okay.
Just done like at least if you see seventeen, it's really coming from the payment that was made in August of sixteen. I gave it your say.
Well, almost like you say, this is the levy from December sixteen is the amount of money collected off of that levy. It's the levy of seventeen is the amount of money collected off that levy.
Mm-hmm.
That would, that would help us better understand, because then, if we see that we haven't collected all the money, well, we're either not getting it or we're getting it in the following year.
Yeah.
Is this something that could be worked out in the council, one of your advisory councils?
This comes from the treasurer's office. So I mean, having a chart, we could, me and Scott can easily make you a chart so the board understands it a little better. But I don't think we're gonna have the authority to tell the treasurer's office how we want it.
We could tell them, they're just not gonna love us that.
So this is how they send us directly, so it's just a matter of, so, for better understanding.
They wanna keep it fuzzy, man.
But I think what Dr. Kane's suggesting is, is easy sketches for us, and maybe every once in a while, we put in the board report. So when they see seventeen, that's really the payments off the seventeen levy that they just approved. Anything that's credited to sixteen would be from the tax payments that came in from the August, the second thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's why I think we need to change the way that budget lines are referred to prior. It doesn't really help because there's, at the second installment, uh, for each year, there's three different years that are being addressed, the assessment year, the receipt year, and the budget year for the district. They're all three different years. And s- and I read like prior on that, and I'm still like, okay, well, which one are we talking about here?
No, I, I, I understand, and like you said, what I have to work off of, they just add anything that was from the prior year, sixteen, fifteen, fourteen. All is clumped into that.
All right, well, we'll continue to talk with them.
Continue to look at it.
Maybe when the new software comes in, they'll be able to do a little better job of assigning a year to it, or at least put on this sheet so we know.
But this is coming, this is our, that's not the township treasurer.
That's right, Cook County.
And then our treasurer, Proviso, uses the exact same sheet and distributes the funds based off of the percentages of what that levy was.
Okay. All right, Scott, thank you. You got another report. There you done yet? The hits keep on coming.
It's all right. Okay, if we move on to Board Book page fifty-three. I would like to present the capital improvements life safety project summary. Uh, the following summary captures all revenue and expenditures from the two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen capital improvements projects. Uh, the two main sources of revenue are the non-life safety funds. This is the capital development grant, the state maintenance grant, and any other revenue that came in. That totaled approximately nine million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And then the other source of revenue is the life safety bonds. That totaled six million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-two, giving the district total revenue of fifteen million, six twenty-five, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. Project expenditures were tracked per specific year, individual projects, and by what type of funds were used for payment. Overall, the district spent fifteen million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-two to complete all the projects. This is approximately a hundred and eighty thousand over budget. The majority of the additional costs were due to legal fees, zoning and special permitting process, and design revisions. If we move on to Board Book page fifty-four, we can go through the summary. Uh, the non-life safety funds that are there, giving the dollar amounts, breaking it out. And of course, the life safety bonds as they are linked to the amendments that the board approved and bonded out for. The project expenditure summaries, as you can see, our two thousand fifteen project is the outside stadium, the tennis courts, the parking lot, the roof, permitting, and legal fees. The two thousand sixteen project was the main gym, additional roofs, and exit G. And in two thousand seventeen, there was some more additional roofs that were done. If you look at the summary, it's broken down with what type of funds were used to pay for these projects, giving the overall summary of our fifteen million, seven hundred and ninety-six thou- seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, one sixty-two that was spent. The...
Can I stop you there?
Yes.
You'd like a job just going a little bit fast. The, uh, so WC is at the working cash?
That is working cash.
But doesn't that belong in one of the other twos in some fashion or not?
That is on ti- that working cash had to be transferred in order to pay for those additional expenditures. So after you exhausted all of the non-life safety funds, then you would have to use working cash dollars to be transferred to pay for the additional expenditures. So currently, looking at each individual, there is a surplus of two hundred and forty-six thousand in life safety bonds. That money will be used for additional roof work, um, projected to be out in two thousand twenty-three. And if you take the amount, the surplus of life safety dollars and the working cash dollars gives a net of a hundred and eighty thousand.
So Scott, we don't need to go through each page?
Right.
Um, but if the board, if the board at a later date, and this will also be posted to the website under the board count. But on fifty-five is basically the summary for everything related to the outdoor athletic conferen- uh, complex. Uh, on fifty-six is everything related to, um, the gym, or is that still the, okay, fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven is...
Is everything related to the gym and the roofs that we did in the summer of sixteen? And then seven, uh, fifty-eight is all the roof work we did this past summer. And so one thing that we specialize, we wanted to make sure we did, learning from the previous board and the previous administration, um, we wanted to make sure each part of the project was accounted for. So that's why you see like bleachers are separate, the building's separate, the field's separate, the track's separate, the tennis, the parking, the fence. Now, some of these subcontractors worked in, uh, both areas, in multiple parts of the project, and so that's why you'll see their name mentioned, uh, multiple times. Um, this is going all the way back to when Tim McGinnis was even still here, working with our construction manager, trying to break this out as specific as possible so we could, um, identify at the end of the day what the overall, what the building cost at the athletic complex, what the field cost. So that was one thing we weren't able to do, uh, with the previous project. So, um, this kind of lays all that out, and then what account was used to pay for it?
I mean, I, I don't know if it'd be much different, especially to get, like, to see what Laura and John think, because we did get a lot of, uh, pushback on that we did properly as a board and administration account for the, uh, construction that was done in the main building in, what, two thousand and seven or so?
Yeah.
Um, and that's one reason you're making this, but it's useful to break it down by year because that's how we planned it. But I think it'd also be useful to just do a second summary and just break it down by component, like roofs. Because there's roofs in every year. There's a couple of things that overlap years and just say, you know, the stadium costs this much, the, I mean, most of it's there already, but rather than break, have one other summary that breaks it down strictly by component and not dividing it by year. I don't know, John or Laura, what do you think?
Or does this, this is good enough?
If you want to simplify it, that'd be more of like a summary sheet. Okay, the, the track was supposed to cost this, it did. Stadium complex was supposed to cost this, this is what it cost.
Well, that's already in there.
That's already in there?
I think what he's saying is, outdoor athletic complex, X million dollars. Roof work over the last three years, X million of dollars.
Gym.
Main gym is internal renovations, X million.
You know, you could put the main lines for each one of them.
You have the data here, so we can...
I'm just saying that at the end of the day, so somebody wants to know, how much did we spend on roofs over three years? They don't have to add a bunch of them. And roofs are the main thing that's spread around, but...
But our total, if I'm looking at it, the total budget, we, we had the eight million dollar grant. We came in right around there. And I just want to remind us, the first two, two years that the four of us came on, we spent all that time scanning hundreds of documents, hundreds. And we put them on the web. And did anybody ever come to pour over them or look at them?
Some, a couple people asked.
Okay, so let, let that be a lesson in how much we're gonna do for this. Because we had the eight million dollar grant, we came in at eight million, some, uh, change. Maybe another little summary, but this brings it down a little. Yeah.
You know, again, this, what I'm asking for is a lot of effort on your part, Scott, to do it just project whole instead of by year.
Okay. All, all the information is there. We'll get that compiled and, and, uh, get a draft.
Put another box on this summary that just says over three years. You know, we could figure out a short summary out of that.
We, you know, again, we've, you've got plenty of information that's supported by, and, you know, one of the other complaints was, you know, what did the cost versus what we budgeted, and we've...
That's all accounted for.
On a monthly basis reported on that, and you've got that accounted for, so, thank you.
Can I ask a quick overall question on this? When we budgeted it, we had a contingency as part of that budget, correct?
Yes, yes.
So our over is above and beyond the contingency?
Our over, there's not, if you look really closely, if you went to each one of these projects, and, uh, when they're broken out by the individual stadium, tennis court, all that, not one of those really went over budget. The four hundred and twenty-six that came out of, um, working cash was primarily for legal fees, permitting fees. I mean, that was all money that was, every time we had to do, go to a special zoning permit, we had to pay for three or four, the architect engineers to be there, parking studies. So there wasn't, to my knowledge, I think if you look at this, uh, when you start going through like what they bid and what we spent, there wasn't really anybody that was significantly over, over budget. That's why when it, when you, um, when you go down the far right column, anything with a negative means we were under budget there, so the project, all the actual projects to build, the construction work was under budget. It was all the professional service fees.
But like the, the marble work on the front, the front stairs.
Right.
Totally unanticipated, yeah.
So if you look at like the parking lot, we were three thousand over. Fence was a thousand over. Everything else was pretty much under budget.
But the parking lot and tennis court, though, from the original design to the new design, there was a, an additional cost.
Right.
With it.
But that's, some of that's under plan revisions that came out of working cash. But I think the biggest thing he was getting at was, even with the contingencies, how do we go over? Well, that's because of mostly all of the redesigned revisions and the special stuff we had to go through.
So overall, I mean, it looks like things were on target, and we knew they were on target.
We did fifteen million dollars of work, and we were a hundred, within a hundred and eighty thousand of budget.
It's about one percent.
Right. And that's with the lawsuit and...
Extra studies, remember? We had to do extra change orders. We had to do extra traffic studies, extra lighting studies.
So overall, it was a, a good project, I would say.
We say, we didn't mismanage the fund.
Right, everything's accounted for.
I mean, that's, that's the gist of the whole thing, right?
Correct.
How we're judged, yeah.
And if you look at page fifty-six on the bottom, the list of additional costs there. Kevin, pretty much I'll have her looking at it, the, you know, most of those had to do with the change of designing for the water system we required, because of the special, you know, this lawsuit inheritance we had to prepare.
The zoning court approved at seven zero.
I mean, we had a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in legal fees that we didn't anticipate. So it's unfortunate, but, and we still were within one percent.
Yeah, it's one, yeah, it's close to one or two percent, so.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Other way, Gene or John?
Good job, Scott.
Uh, that, nothing on that particular report.
Good work. Appreciate it.
Yeah, that's a good report.
So we'll move on to discussion information items, FOIA requests.
Uh, we had a few FOIA requests, uh, three-point consulting. As the teacher salary schedule, we refer to them to the online, and we'll, uh, Mary Ann's also gonna email them and, uh, refer to them to the HR page where the compensation report is. Uh, Stephen Caciulli was a smart procure. This was in regards to PO numbers, purchase date, line items. We could not generate another, we're not required to generate another report, but we are gonna refer him to our board bills list, which has a list of our vendors and purchase number system. And then the compensation package for, um, the school safety liaison. The, we sent them a list of information. Uh, we do not have an agreement with this school safety liaison. We have an agreement with the village of Riverside that basically just says we're covering all those fees, but I don't think it breaks down, uh, what those fees are. So I think we're okay there.
Okay.
And we had no updates on the police radios still at this time.
So the next item, any questions on either of those items? Uh, normally we can move into visitor statements, but since there's no visitors, Bob, you wanna make a statement?
I'll be a visitor tomorrow. I'm not a visitor, so I can come.
Why won't you be a visitor tomorrow?
I'm not a visitor tonight. Why should I be a visitor?
So move on to additional discussion items. At this point in the meeting, board of education members may request to add an additional discussion item. Anybody to my right? Anybody on my left? John? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, approval of the minutes.
Resolved at the Board of Education Township High School District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois, hereby takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes for the meetings held on February thirteenth and twenty-seven, twenty eighteen. for the meetings held on February thirteenth and twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen, open and closed. Approves IHSA membership for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year as presented and amended in the March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Second. The only, I should have said before we read it that the IHSA membership for the school year was included, but since Ramona read it, I think everybody knows that now.
It's in the packet, right?
Yep.
Sorry, jumped the gun.
Are there any questions or discussion on the minutes? How about on the IHSA membership? Have we approved that since, once, since everybody's been on the board, or do you want to...
No.
Kevin, why don't you give a little expert?
Every year, the board is required to, every year, the board is required to formally approve our participation in the IHSA, and basically just says, well, adhere to their policies, bylaws, et cetera. Our athletic department attends town hall meetings or required meetings, and when there are certain votes, Kristin is required to attend as the building principal. As a member of the Illinois High School, High School Districts Association, we also meet as superintendents with the IHSA at least once a year to get updates on any bylaws or any changes or things that are going on. And then ultimately, it runs through the principals and the athletic departments. So this is more or less a formality that we're going to be a part of the IHSA.
Is there a dues requirement?
I don't think we pay a dues.
It's just dues for the conference.
How do they get their money? How does the IHSA get their money?
Sponsorships, state events.
Yeah, when you pay...
Good for them. They're not taxing us.
Regional, sectional, state, they get the money. Any questions? Other way? Mary Ann?
Yes, Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So move on to old business action items, life safety items, capital improvements.
No updates at this time. We're still working on internal projects. Joel's doing a great job, trying to do a lot of this through just hiring individual subcontractors to complete the remaining life safety work that the board bonded out this fall. So we talked at our weekly meeting that will provide another update to the facilities council and eventually the board before the end of the school year, just how much we've been able to do internally with through subcontractors, and then other timelines for projects. But it's, we only have roughly one point five million, one point seven million of work to do, so it's not as, not as much reporting out as occurred over the last three years.
Any questions? Next item is textbook adoptions.
So we have one change from the first reads, or I'd ask that you look at page ninety-seven in Board Book. We've updated the textbook replacement cost to approximately nine thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars of this is for the additional online earth science licenses for the textbooks due to the new college and career readiness academy. It's a, earth science is a book we adopted last year, but since we'll be having freshmen take this course in addition to juniors, it's a, it's a slightly different course, but they'll be using the same resource, so we will need five thousand dollars for that. And then we have estimated four thousand dollars right now for repair and replacement as a very high end. We collect an actual number closer to the end of the school year, and so we'll be able to update that in the budget, but that's just an approximation.
Who repairs the books for us? Do you send them out? Do we do it ourselves?
We do.
You do it here?
I believe we do.
Or you send them out? I'm sorry, okay. Are there any questions on this? Might as well have somebody read the, and this is, like you said, we, we went over this, and Ms. Gregor explained it the last time she was here, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Does somebody want to read the resolution then? Ramona, are you?
I am, I was just looking for it. Resolved at the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the adoption of the following textbooks for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. Psychology for AP, third edition, Discovery Education Science Techbook, Entrez Culturas One, McGruder's American Government as presented in the March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Somebody want to second?
I'll second it.
Scott, that, Mary Ann?
Dr. King?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure you got the party. Does anybody have any questions or want to discuss this rest? We good? Thanks, Mary.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the student handbook.
There's been one change since the first read as well. This begins on page one hundred and eleven in the Board Packet, but we have, we have taken out the proposed language regarding suspensions and not allowing students to attend school dances. We had existing language in there which allowed if a student had multiple disciplinary infractions as one of the options to put them on building restriction and activity restriction, which included dances. And so we will enforce that next year, and that's, again, for students that have multiple infractions. And so we don't feel that we need any additional language at this time, and that was the only change.
So, and you looked at this to, you're from the policy. Are we giving our administration enough leeway for those odd circumstances that, you know, happen, where they can...
Well, I think it's best to have Kristin tell us. Do you think you have both the ability to, if you need to, to be stringent, if you feel like there, you need to make an accommodation, do you have that ability?
Yes, I certainly believe so. I, I looked at our current language, and I feel very strongly that we, we don't need to add anything, that if we needed to, we could enforce that based off of our current language in the handbook.
And we don't need to take anything out. My concern was that we had added too much.
Yes. And I, I agree, we corrected it. And so I think our current language, our existing language suffices.
Any other questions, comments? Does somebody want to read the resolution then?
Got it. Resolved at the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the adoption of the student handbook for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year as presented in the March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion or questions? Mary Ann?
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Yes. That moves us on to the final item in our, it says extracurricular activity tour requests. And again, you went through a thorough explanation for us on this last time, and there were a couple of requests to reconsider, and you did have somebody, or you did it yourself, add details on the cost of the basketball and the football programs, right?
Correct, yes. So if you look at page one ninety-five, that are the changes for the basketball educational tour. So we approximate, since there'll be fifteen people, approximately a hundred and fifty dollars for the team meal. And as previously stated, there is a cost of a hundred dollars for the team to participate. So the total cost of the trip is two hundred and fifty dollars plus any gas costs. This cost will be covered by the boys' basketball activity account, and the revenue for that account is generated by fundraising efforts. And so the proxy, I did not put this on the form, since there is absolutely no student cost, it would be about twenty dollars and eighty-three cents per student, but because it's such a low cost, it's being directly paid out of the activity account. Are there any questions on that one before moving on to football? So football, if you could look at page one hundred and ninety-nine in Board Book, the overall cost for a student is two hundred and five dollars, although that will be offset by fundraising efforts. And it is broken down, the registration cost for the camp is a hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, and the transportation is approximately seventy-three dollars a student. So that's where you get the approximate two hundred and five dollar cost per student.
Can you answer one question as a general question? It made me think of this. So there are estimated forty-eight students at two hundred, it's almost, it's around two oh five, it's about ten thousand dollars. And it goes, the fundraising goes into the activity account, then it comes up, but do they require these students going this year to raise two hundred and five dollars, or do they just raise money and they, whatever the difference is, comes out of the activity account?
Yeah, they raise as much money as they can, and then the difference is covered out of the activity account. But a majority of the fundraising is done this summer. One thing they do is they sell those cards. Another thing they typically do in the spring is they have that mattress fundraiser, and that is surprisingly raises a lot of money. I know it's raised like over three thousand dollars. And so it's items like that that then go into the activity account.
Okay. Does somebody want to read the resolution?
We got it. Resolved at the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the payment of, oh, that's the wrong one, is it?
It's on page one ninety-three.
Sorry.
It's up there.
It's on the wrong pa, the next one. I'm trying to get ahead of myself there. Resolved at the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the following extracurricular activity tour requests. Boys' basketball, Marquette Varsity Team Camp, Marquette University, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, June ninth or tenth, twenty-eighteen. Loris College Overnight Football Summer Camp, Loris College, Dubuque, Iowa, July fifth through the seventh, twenty-eighteen. Super CBA Cheer Camp, Utica, Illinois, end of July, dates to be determined as presented in the March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Is there a second? Mr. Smithing? Any discussion to my right? This way?
I just want to add something. I, it's a very small thing to add, like with the cost, but I think it's got a lot of value to do that, you know? Just total transparency, I think, is a great idea. It just makes it easier for us to like get a handle on it, too, like what does this involve? So, thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Anybody else? Mary Ann?
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Yes. Then we move on to new business. The first item is payment of the bills.
Scott, do we have any questions this week?
No questions, we're submitted.
Okay.
Does somebody want to read the resolution?
You were back.
Two ten.
Resolved at the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mary Ann?
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing? Yes.
Yes. The next item is the transfer of funds from working cash to capital projects.
So this is to offset that, the deficit that we talked about in the construction summary report. Also, we confirmed with our auditor, we want to make sure that we weren't paying something out of life safety, that shouldn't be paid out of life safety. So this will make sure everything is taken out of the right account.
Have we done a transfer for working cash since?
The board has been, not in May, when we did the budget.
I thought we did.
I think we've done one.
Either Kevin or Scott wanted to...
Your working cash, your working cash fund is basically like your savings fund. That's where when there's any leftover money, it's in excess of the budget, that's where it's stored, is in the working cash fund. So whenever you have to do, make up some payments or shift money to an account, you would transfer it from your working cash fund. But the board needs to take formal action to do a fund transfer.
And if you saw in the packet, there's a long, formal resolution, but we are allowed to read a short one saying we're approving the long one, right?
Correct.
And then the president just signs the long one and sends it in.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
So it's on page two thirty-seven, does anyone want to read that?
Yes. Resolved at the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby authorizes and directs the school treasurer to make a transfer in the amount of seventy thousand dollars from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund as presented in the March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Mary Ann?
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the staffing summary, minimum course enrollment approval.
So the board, Kristin will provide a summary of her chart and her work that's included in the board packet. When I first arrived in twenty-eleven, and the school district was dealing with the large deficit, in the spring of twenty-twelve, the second semester of my first year, we were bringing the board up to speed on some practices to put in place in order to account for staffing, and the staffing of classes to ensure that we were, being our largest expenditure, that we, it was reflecting student interest and need. And so the board approved a policy that any courses below twenty needed board approval to run. And so what we do every year in March, as we bring you the courses that we know we need to run in order to have a holistic curriculum, and we ask for board approval on some of these courses. We also provide some initial staffing reports, just to give you an idea of courses that are possibly over the caps, that we have set in order to kind of keep a handle on our staffing and our largest expenditure, or some that are under the cap but over the twenty mark, just to give you an idea of where we're at with staffing after all course selection is done and before we do any rehiring for next school year. What Kristin will do is she'll bring this same report to you in August or the first board meeting of September to give you an idea of how this compared out, once we had all the transfers coming in over the summer, and if there was any changes in staffing. Is that, anything else am I missing?
No, that report comes a little later.
September cow?
October.
Yeah. But I think we've given updates. It's just trying to push it forward.
I was panicking a little bit.
All right, Kristin, give them the summary of your report.
All right, so this accounts for our one oh four point four FTE, which was the projection that Dr. Skink has provided in November. So that FTE includes the FTE that we need for the new college and career readiness academy, which involved the restructuring of our reading as well to give students an option between extended reading and just a fifty-minute period of reading, as well as a point four FTE that was allocated for an additional social worker. Just as, as an aside, one of the things that the students, which was a reoccurring theme on Monday in many different high schools, but one of the things that our students expressed was more awareness of the mental health services provided at our B. And so I think an additional point four social worker clearly aligns with that, and we have some general programming that that social worker will do. So below are the list of courses that are below twenty that need board approval. Pre-algebra is something that you probably will see every school year, so we offer it within the math department so that students with or without IEPs can take the course. Predominantly, a majority of the students that take the course have IEPs, as it's a course that's below grade level. However, it's important that we offer it to students without IEPs as well. Introduction to Heritage Speakers, it was a new course last year, so these are obviously for students who speak Spanish at home and are usually pretty good at speaking, but struggle with the grammar aspect and the writing aspect of Spanish. And so this is one of our courses that is also considered a bilingual course. We have sixteen students enrolled now. Typically, we will have students that transfer in that will fall into one of our heritage courses. So I would guess that this course would be over twenty, once the school year started. And then our honors German III and AP German class combined has nineteen students. This isn't too surprising, because last year we brought to you German II, which had seventeen students. So obviously, they're now German III, and we have nineteen students. So in addition to that, we provide special education enrollment and a history for the past seven years. So that is on the next chart, the next page, it's the first chart. This year, we added transition placements for you to get a better sense of what specifically our students are doing. So as you can see for next year, we anticipate two hundred and thirteen special education students. We have fifteen that are in private placements, and you can see the trend over the year, years. The reason that our total number of students has gone up is because our number of transition placements have gone up. And that has gone up for two reasons. So those are students who stay on after they are eligible to receive a diploma, they defer that. So all special education students have a right to receive additional services up until their twenty-second birthday. And so transition students consist of students who are eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, up until, again, their twenty-second birthday. And so that's why that... And so that's why that number jumped from fifteen to twenty-eight, because it depends on, obviously, the number of students that we graduate the previous year and the number of students that choose to stay on. Over time, you can see a big jump from six to twenty-eight. That's partially because the definition of transition services had expanded. And so that's one of the reasons. The other reasons is our more, more parents are choosing to take advantage of those services. So those services obviously consist of helping students transition into the workforce as well as honing their transportation skills as well to get to those jobs. Next are classes that are over twenty but are under the cap. And so when you look at this, it's a little confusing at first. So we're reporting out on anything that is below the negative, the window of, we look at plus or minus two. So it's anything that's below that minus two for the cap. So anything that's below twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-eight, or thirty-eight are what we reported out on. And you can see the list of courses, and that is very similar to the number of courses that fell into this category last year. These are courses that are only offered one period a day. And some of these courses are low, and we know we will have transfer students that can enroll in those courses as well.
Can you tell me what CAP is?
CAP is our college admissions program. So it's our test prep class for, now will be the SAT before it was the ACT.
Kristen, just on page two forty-five.
She didn't get there.
It's the same chart, right?
No.
The top part is, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So the second chart on page two, the second chart on page two forty-five are classes that are offered one period a day, but they're over the cap. So the first chart was under, this one is over.
My question, though, was on the two forty-five on the top, still carrying over from your previous chart.
Okay.
So German I has twenty.
Correct.
And we already approved German III?
Three and AP.
Okay, so obviously, we got to keep an eye on our German numbers.
Correct.
Because we're having trouble getting twenty students signing up just for regular German.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to.
Yes. And sometimes you'll, I mean, in languages, you'll, you'll see a drop off, especially after, usually after two, students get a little intimidated by the third level. But certainly, you may have some students drop off after one year as well. So the next chart is cla- are classes that are only offered one period a day but are over the plus two of that cap. And so because these are only offered one period a day, some of these will, students will simply conflict out, meaning they'll have to make a tough decision between, you know, do I want to take this course or do I want to take this course? Because they're both only offered seven period a day. And in scheduling those, we try to minimize the number of students that have to make that decision, but it does ultimately happen for some students. Looking specifically at Calculus BC, we anticipate just running the course at twenty-eight rather than having two sections of fourteen. So that would be a particular course where we don't anticipate students conflicting out, or also the music classes, honors, wind ensemble, symphonic marching band, et cetera.
And if I recall correctly, when this finalized last year, you didn't have any that were like that over or anything like that, right?
Correct. And then on page two forty-six are classes that are offered multiple periods a day that are over the cap. And so depending on the course, you've, we've given you the class average because we offer them multiple periods. And so you can see we may be just a few students over in a particular course. And depending on the course, some students will typically conflict out, other students will be moved out of the course based upon their grade level and/or course recommendation or previous grades. If they were recommended to take a course, but maybe not have the grades that would demonstrate they'd be successful in that course, you would have a conversation with that student. But a majority of these classes are typically under the target by the start of the school year as well.
For the Calculus BC, would it be better to have one class that, you know, meets your requirement, maybe one a little smaller, is twenty-eight?
Was it twenty-eight or thirty-five for Calculus? Is that too big for that class?
It's twenty-eight. We certainly have run prior to the initiative of lowering core math courses, or core courses, math, science, and English to the twenty-five to one. They have, they have run at the thirty, thirty to one, or thirty cap in the past.
So do you think, though, twenty-eight will be in there by the start of the year or will someone drop?
Most of the students in Calculus BC choose to stay in there. There might be one, at most two, but most of those students will stay in that course.
Okay, so if one or two drop, then we're right at the cap?
Correct.
Or under the cap?
We really only need one to drop.
Okay.
To be within the cap, not that I would encourage a student to drop.
Remember, we use these caps too as just kind of the guidelines to help us with staffing.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Every teacher in the, in the, in the school would say, hey, take that class to twenty-eight and most, and make it two, two of fourteen. If we could do that, that would be great. But then we might use more than one oh four point four, and I would need the board to approve that.
Calculus BC, we have few of these types of classes.
Sure, I understand.
And so I'm just asking if that was something people are requesting a little more help, or are we making sure that we're giving enough resources? Because that's.
So it's a higher level.
It's a higher-class, it's a highest-level math class. I think we'd want to make sure it's successful.
In talking to instructional coaches and being a former math department chair, if I had limited FTE and I had to decide where I would give an extra section to, it would not be Calculus BC. It would be either Algebra I, Extended Algebra, some of our students who have a difficult time understanding concepts. It wouldn't be for our honors or AP classes. Now, if FTE was endless, sure, you know, we would want to give another section to that course, but if you're looking at, given the FTE that we have, I would put it towards our struggling learners.
Well, plus, if I, you're talking to me if I'm wrong, but we actually had pretty good scores in Calculus on the AP last year, didn't we?
We typically do ever here.
Well, we, it's improved since you've been here. We had years when it wasn't very good at all. So, but my recollection is we did pretty well.
Calculus BC students do very well on the AP test. I just want to make sure we have enough resources for it.
Anybody else? And so for this one, Kristen, you gave a very thorough, long report, but the only thing as a board we actually vote on is approving the three courses where the enrollment is under twenty.
And over.
No, we don't.
Just under.
She reports on twenty.
I thought we also have to approve it to over.
No, we told them we wanted to report on it all the time. So we make sure we aren't getting the classes too big. The policy only requires us to vote.
I see.
Courses that are under twenty. And again, I think what Dr. Skink has didn't add is, when he looked at it when he first came, we ran a whole bunch of courses where there were like less than ten people in them.
Ten.
Five, six, seven.
Oh, yeah.
So that's why we set up this policy. So I think if somebody could flip back to page two forty-two.
I'm there. Resolved at the Board of Education, Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves in accordance with district policy six colon thirty-one, minimum course enrollment. The list of courses for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year with projected enrollment below twenty students based on the current student enrollment data as presented in the March thirteenth, twenty eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? So one thing people need to understand on the board, if we haven't done this when everybody's on, it is possible that when actual enrollment comes up, we'll have more other classes that could be under twenty, and the administration can decide to run the class that we wouldn't have. We just vote on it based on the projection, so that everybody understands.
That's why we give you the second chart of courses under, over twenty but under a cap, so we know which ones we're watching. Mary Ann?
I'll just add one comment. I think this shows that we're being efficient in the way we're allocating students to classes and stuff, and I think you could probably tweak it too if you had to. You could encourage kids to take this instead of that. No, it's good. I like this.
Well, I, I think one other thing Kristen, they didn't explain where some of us have been on board longer, you put a lot of effort into working on the schedule so that you didn't have a lot of like one, what do you call when there's only one?
Singleton.
Singleton.
The singletons at the same time, and that the ones where there's three or four, five sections are spread out during the school year. So over that couple of years you did that, you improved the participation of the students and cut down on the number of courses that were way higher, way low, too.
Correct. I can't take credit for that. Beth Augustine, Director of Student Services, facilitates a majority of the master's schedule, and then she meets and brings the information to me, but she works hard on it with our data processing manager to minimize the conflicts and then to maximize the number of students in the course, given the guidelines that we have set.
So do we have a list of the courses that are over twenty that we not approve yet? That we just canceled?
No, we didn't cancel them.
We don't cancel any, we don't cancel anything over twenty.
So maybe I said that wrong. So if kids don't sign up, and we have seven kids, then we don't offer that class?
Correct.
We elicit those all classes.
Classes that don't run, there's a lot of them.
There's a bunch.
There's a lot.
I know, but if we keep putting the same class on every year, and five years we don't offer it.
You're saying, just pull the course?
Just pull the course.
We are, we are looking at that. We, we started the process for looking at what new courses we want to run in the future. This is the time of year where teachers have, or instructional coaches have an opportunity to alter prerequisites for courses and then to take courses off the books. And we have one of those for next year as well. So teachers have a hard time saying goodbye to a course that's like in the course guide even though it may not have run in the past. And so.
Again, you get blindsided from your neighbor, right?
Yes, correct.
Oh, I, every year you cancel this class. I'm like, I don't even know if we had that class.
So, yes.
Right? Because I didn't know that we canceled it, or excuse me, we didn't offer it. So that we didn't offer it, well, then we might have not offered it before and before, and they might have a very narrow point, right? It's hard for me to explain, well, yeah, we do for this one, but we don't for that one.
So.
So, I mean, I'm welcome to do that. And I understand that we, we're looking at German. Okay, well, we're approving German, 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 and it looks like we're going to have to approve it next year, next year, next year. So, you know, maybe we need to.
Well, we start, we start watching, looking for trends. You know, but we have some courses that get three or four kids every year to sign up because it looks like a cool elective in the way it's written in the course, but it hasn't run.
Maybe we keep it on there because it looks like a cool elective.
But then sometimes we do have courses like AP Music Theory that hasn't run in a couple of years, but you'll get a class that's very musically focused, and you'll have enough students to run the course. So it's, it's a tough decision whether or not to take something off the books. I understand from a parent's perspective, you know, looking at courses in the course guide that actually run.
So the question, did Rock Band make it back?
Rock Band did make it back, yes.
See, I mean, my interest, I thought that might come back.
It did.
So, but you could take that class and reoffer it.
Right.
If you had enough.
I could always pull, I could always pull, Beth might be able to run a list of courses that did not have enough students out. Like it's in a Friday update.
We had eight or nine. I did count. I don't have the actual list of courses, but we had about eight or nine that had some students express interest, but like maybe three or four, sometimes one.
I'm just curious. The reason we give you so much information is when we first started to have to do all the cuts back in two thousand and eleven, twelve, the concern was that we were losing our academic integrity. And so what we've tried to build up over the years is that we're trying to keep courses closer to twenty-five to one, that are core courses, the courses that are, we're trying to just be fully transparent. Here's the courses that are run high, here's the courses that we're committed to keeping our core courses, and the core content areas low. From there.
Somebody want to read the resolution?
I think I did.
Did she?
Yeah, I did. And you said discussion, and now it's up for the vote.
Mary Ann, you want to vote? She can't tell you to vote. Don't listen to her.
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item on the agenda is the registration fee for the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year. It's a first read. There's not very many changes.
Yeah, minimal changes. The technology fee for seniors is going up. That's really the only one that's highlighted in yellow from Kristen. I think if the board wanted to, we could add this easily to the consent agenda in April. And the reason I'm saying that, it's Kristen, that gives you three or four weeks. Case another fee should pop up and you need to share that with the board. They didn't approve it tonight. And if the board's okay, we can put this on the consent agenda for April, since there's a minimal change.
The only question I, and that's not a problem for you, for printing the books if we vote for or need for.
We would still meet the handbook deadline, and we would advertise this as an anticipated fee in the course verifications at the home to parents.
Does anybody have a concern about it? Is it consent agenda item? That's fine.
I mean, they could approve it tonight, but then it doesn't give you a window if something changes or someone gives something last night.
April, sorry.
Okay.
So approval of the telephone company services.
Scott, you want to provide a summary of the background here?
Yes. Our current three-year telephone service agreement with Call One is expiring June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen. A request for proposal was sent out to eight different vendors on January twenty-fourth with a due date of February seventh. It was also advertised in the newspaper to try to get some interest. Vendors were told to supply a three-year service options. The district received proposals from three out of the eight telephone service vendors. Just a little background, due to the current infrastructure, the district has had some reliability issues resulting in extended phone outages. They proposed three-year telephone service agreement to switch from copper to fiber service, will address the reliability issues and allow the district to keep up with current telecommunication technology. Proposals are outlined below. If you look, the lowest one is Comcast. It does offer a small savings annually for the district compared to what our current Call One vendor is. Vendors who declined.
Don't need to know that.
Okay. District also checked pricing on POTS line. This was Plano Telephone Service. This was part of the request for proposal out there. There was some questions submitted. Why would we want to choose a vendor that was uninterested in it? Call One was interested.
Make sure that's clear. Call One is not included in the originally fiber optics, but they're the vendor you're suggesting.
For Plano Telephone Service.
Right.
They weren't, they didn't submit a bid for the one. Why are we interested in it for the other?
They, they were interested, however, they didn't meet the deadline to, to submit it.
And their current rate is still cheaper than what the others bid?
What the others did.
What the other proposals were. It wasn't a bidding.
Proposals that, that came in.
Okay.
So why, you know, the other thing is, so you did, then, if I'm understanding what you said here, but now what I think you proposed, that the Plano Telephone Service, as you referred to it, that was included in the RFP?
It was included in it.
Well, if Call One didn't respond that time, how did they get that piece? If you said you eliminated because they didn't respond that time, how'd you pick them for the rest of the other thing that was in the same RFP?
The reason, the reason that I'm recommending to stay with Call One for the POTS lines is that this provides a failsafe for nine-one-one with it being at a different, having two different carriers on it. If the main line should so happen to, you know, go down, you still would have a backup with Call One over the copper to make nine-one-one calls. And it was also recommended per our phone consultant to have two carriers on it.
And so I think the, the only thing I think he was looking for clarification from you on, is since they didn't submit a proposal, but their current rate was still cheaper than the other proposals.
That is correct.
And this is not, and it's not that our, we just asked for a request for proposals so we can renew with them just for that service, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So I did confirm with Call One, the pricing would continue at the same for the POTS lines.
And that was still the cheapest compared to the other ones that did bid on?
Yes.
Yes.
Comcast, it would have been higher on the?
The, the problem with Comcast, it would be a matter of dollars, and I'm taking a guesstimate on what the taxes would be.
That's fine.
So.
I got it. It's good to have a backup.
Okay. Do you want, this is a first read, Scott?
This is a first read.
Okay. And the, and the contracts included, we didn't receive any questions from anybody else on that?
The contracts were in the board packet.
This is just for.
Phones.
The fiber. It's not for the physical phone. And well, the physical phones that are in the. And will the physical phones that are in the rooms are, will take the, be able to, to work with the, with the upgrade, yes?
Yes, they will. The phones will have to be looked at down the road. They still have probably three years left where they will be supported. We did check on that. So that wasn't even part of the proposal.
Okay.
The main thing was is we want to use our current infrastructure-
Okay.
And make sure that the new phone lines would be supported with what are currently, what we have.
Right.
So that's down the road we are going to have to look at.
Absolutely.
The actual phones.
It's a beast when you can't find replacement parts for headsets and whatever else breaks. So, yeah, looking ahead is great.
Yes, we will, like, that's down the road currently, the Mitels that we have are supported.
Okay, and I'm just so happy to not, because for eight years I've been hearing teachers embarrassingly tell me at parent night every fall, please don't call me because I, I can't guarantee that I'll get your call. So this is nice that parents can, teachers can actually say to parents, call me, I'll get it.
Can they actually answer the phone when they're teaching classes, do they?
No. No, but they weren't even getting the messages.
All right, so it's a first read.
First read.
Same with the, the next one is the-
So the next one is press plus the new policy. And I think you put it here.
I put it in here, we're gonna, Ms. Sierra and Mr. Grichen and I will try to meet before the April meeting to get our changes. You won't see those till probably the April cow. And then we'll take action at the, so you won't, we'll leave this in there as a, for the board.
And there's none that are pressing because of a change in the law at this point?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay. The next item on our agenda are the matters for closed session, which include personnel, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. Another time in our agenda for visitor statement, but we have no visitors, so we will move on. There were no discussion items requested. Is there anybody who would like to offer items to be considered for future meetings? We still have one that John asked for on the safety.
I'm thinking April cow or in the, in the May meeting. I'd like Lane to have a semester under his belt to say what's working, what's not working. What do you think, what do you recommend?
Okay.
Well, and the kids are gonna come up with some things, right? From this committee that could be included with school safety.
You can certainly include some of that as well.
I remember the school safety.
I'd like to know, I mean, usually they have the best ideas anyways, so.
That moves us on.
Was there, did I ask about like the pension shift?
Yes, we already, we sent that in the, I think the, we saw the chart. Or was it, we have a chart.
We have a chart.
And we sent it to the landmark as well, so I think the board got that.
I'll forward you the-
We'll put it in the Friday update again so you can see it.
Anything else?
Ready.
So we'll move on to the next item, which is closed session with something like-
I'm sorry, Tim.
Go on, John.
I'm like two things back, just came to my mind. I'm thinking of this backup. Okay, so is Dr. Skinkis or someone gonna know, well, this is the copper line, so I can call the police? I mean, are we gonna know what phone is what?
A lot of those are, our copper lines are like our, our elevator, the phone that sits in the elevator when the elevator gets stuck, our alarm system, some of those things. We have a couple of general main office lines that are on both copper and fiber. So like she's saying, if one fails.
So you'll, but you'll know.
It just kicks in.
Okay, they're kicking a lot of, there's a switch. Okay, just-
Well, hold on a second.
Not like the bat phone.
So are we shrinking that? We had a lot of pot lines.
That's, I'd like to hear the answer not from somebody on the board who lacks, might lack the complete knowledge, somebody who, well, I don't know what they do in this. The systems are different in different buildings. So does somebody know what happens, which phones are, why don't we do this? Because it was a little unclear. Which phones are on fiber, which are on copper, and which will run on both if they're, need to switch?
Okay. Currently, everything's on copper.
Okay.
With it. Our main, as they call it, our DID trunk, which is all our direct lines and everything. Too much information, I understand. But our main phone service lines will all be over copper. I mean, over fiber, I'm sorry. Our POTS lines, the alarms, the whatever is all with what it is, will stay copper. But there would be a switch that if the main line goes down, we can use the copper lines. We get notification that it's down and we would be able to do the nine-one-ones.
So it doesn't go automatically, you have to be notified and get some kind of switch on?
You will get a notification that you're down from Comcast.
So what-
Or if you pick up a dial, I'm sorry, Tim. If you pick up a dial tone that ain't there, you flip it?
It should, it should in theory switch to the copper to be able to make outgoing calls.
So anything that's on fiber optics will switch to copper?
If it's down, we'll be able to make calls out.
And then if the copper goes down, will that switch to fiber optics?
Well-
They're all on fiber?
No, what would happen, if the fiber goes down and the copper goes down, then we're completely down.
Well, they didn't ask.
That, I know, but that was what it is.
If there's no power, the power's out.
If the fiber's out, it would be fixed within a four-hour window by Comcast.
Okay. That's nice.
And we switch back from copper back to fiber.
Scott, they want to just make sure that there's people in the building know which phones, which, no, hold on. They just want to make sure that there's people within the building will know which lines can dial out when the fiber is down.
We, we will be able to do that.
Okay. How? So, so if there was an emergency and someone picks up their phone, does it automatically switch to copper if the fiber should be out? Yes, this may be a one in a thousand chance. That's what this board is asking right now. It's just to make sure that we have a plan in place so that if fiber goes out, which phones or if all the phones are on copper. If you don't know that answer, you can report this back in April.
Okay, why don't you, because I didn't, I didn't understand that at all. So why don't you tell us what phony, what's running through the copper? What's running through the fiber optics and which would switch? If the fiber goes down, what's switch to copper? If the copper goes down, what switches to fiber?
So Scott, the power goes out, the fiber would still work?
It should.
You're right, because it's not driven by-
It's not driven by electricity.
It's not a void system, it's not a power-driven system, so. And the fiber comes in underground?
It, it will be a separate line coming in from a different point from where our current fiber is primary. So, yes.
Because it, you know, because now, copper goes out, because the tree falls on, the copper goes out, right?
Right.
It's like, that's how your phone goes down.
It could potentially be the same thing with fiber.
Right.
If a tree, you know, if someone drives through and hits where the line comes in, you know, the internet could be down. But same thing could happen when you have the additional line with the fiber. With Comcast, if something happens to it, it would be down.
So the point of entries is still the same?
It would be different points of entry.
Different points of entry, which would, I think we'll look, because you're going to your MPO from a different spot.
It's two different locations.
Right. So if the tree falls on this side of the building, fiber's on us, falls on that side of the building, the copper's going, basically, in a nutshell, kind of like.
It's a first read. Write the question down, we can report on it in April.
I got it, I will, I will find out exactly.
Dr. Kane just asked it tonight, he didn't submit it ahead of time. He knows he's got to wait now to get an answer till the next meeting. So you're okay.
Just thinking ahead, one in a thousand.
I understand.
Bless you, that's why you sold the second, the second option there, so I'm just following up on that.
That's all, we'll, we'll get it.
But the number of POTS lines is the same.
The number of POTS lines, just so the board is aware, originally we had over thirty. They're down to seven now. So we were being overcharged for those additional lines that we didn't know.
What do those cost a piece?
It's roughly with taxes and everything about fifty to fifty-five dollars a POTS line.
So we're saving approximately a thousand a month?
Yes.
Okay.
So it, it, the bill, the bill and all the service was looked at thoroughly to figure out exactly what the district truly needs.
Right, that's what I'd like to hear.